What do you know? You look different in your civilian clothes. Converting things, huh?
Uh, I wish that would convert. That would be nice, though. They have other priorities, I guess.
Yeah, it's, uh, the list doesn't get shorter.
So how you been?
Good. This is so boring.
Well, you know what? Just watch the news, that'll make you fit.
I do, twenty-four seven.
I'd watch, I'd watch I M S B. If I was in your shoes. Gunsmoke.
I watch almost all of, uh... Pam and I, she likes to, uh, the mark, the sheriff in Wyoming, Langmire.
Langmire, Longmire, yeah, I watched that years ago. I should start watching it again, because I probably forgot most of it. You, you really need to watch suits.
What's what?
Suits.
Sue?
Suits.
Sue, oh, suits, yeah, I see that advertised.
Then you, then you'd really be crotchety.
It's about lawyers, right?
Yes. I was gonna, I was gonna call him too, I mean, I was, because I, I went over here at four thirty, so I had a little more time. And, uh... And I was gonna call him, and then I got a couple of calls from some drivers, and I didn't get, I didn't have the time to do that.
Oh, yeah.
Pretty good himself?
Nice out, wasn't it?
How about Nikon rifle scope? My O-ring, front O-ring was coming out, it was green scope. Cleveland has a warranty, I sent it in. Yeah, we don't do that anymore. We got our, let's sort this out. So it's like, well, what am I supposed to do now? All we can't send it back here. Should've kept.
Talk real.
You know, last...
Little bit every week. Get a little accomplished every week. We shouldn't talk about, we shouldn't talk about this now. Later.
Hi, it's me.
Maddie at, uh, Election School.
Yep, 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 left this afternoon.
Okay.
Yep. How you doing?
Just lovely.
Yeah, so... You can't walk on it at all?
No, it's supposed to. No way, very important. What they said yesterday, yesterday at the Castro. What they said is that... For at least, uh, six to eight more weeks. But I put the weight on, because I, when you get up, like, when I get up out of here, I try to keep almost all the weight off the cliff.
You, um, did your wife bring you in?
Yeah, she's here.
Is she here? Oh. Yeah. Um, by the way, um, this has to be postponed. We cannot, Patty, there's a, there's still an issue, Patty said we have to postpone it. We cannot approve it tonight. And I think Deb, I don't know if Deb knows about that.
Deb?
Hey, Deb.
I think everybody that's here is here for that.
I know. Did you know Patty said we have to postpone that? We cannot approve it tonight, because there's still a problem. I didn't know who knew any, uh, I know Rob does, but...
There's some questions.
Yeah, yeah, so it cannot get approved tonight, we have to postpone it.
And, and maybe that's...
Yeah, that has to be postponed, yeah.
Uh, the questions are legal questions, you're waiting from the state?
Correct. Well, they're, they're, yes, it would, it would be, it would be that we have to confirm the results. And we have to be able to do that.
I think our audience is gonna be disappointed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Half of them are sitting here.
We didn't know really until this afternoon that it was gonna be postponed, right? Because Patty didn't tell me till this afternoon.
John, help us stand up.
I think you can stay seated down.
No, I, not the pledge, no one go around his side. Just a minute, just a minute. Okay, got it, thanks, thanks. Sorry about that. Uh, please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, I'll call the meeting to order. Please, uh, turn off your cell phones if you have them, uh, on. Start out with a roll call, please.
John?
Here.
Dan?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
John?
Here. The next item on the agenda, uh... Is to approve the agenda as presented with one change. Item number eight, which, uh, I'm afraid probably is, involves what, uh, the majority of the visitors here are here for, uh, has to be canceled. There's some, uh, legal issues that have to be confirmed before we can move ahead on it. So that's, that'll be, won't be canceled, it'll be, uh, moved forward to the next agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by, uh, Dan, a second by Ryan. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose the same motion carries.
Mister Chairman, I also don't have a conflict of interest.
No conflict or interest from Dan?
I do not have a conflict of interest.
I do not.
I do not either.
Okay. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action, uh, may be taken on a matter, uh, raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There will be no personal attacks against the members of this body, county, staff, individuals, organizations. The Chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Whether to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of the remaining speaking time. Do we have anyone, uh, that, uh, wants to make public comment?
Not on the seat.
Hearing none, seeing none, uh, public comment period will close. Next item on the agenda... Is, uh, beacon fees and tools and vehicle acquisition. Michelle?
Good evening.
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 So as in your packet, um, what I am asking for tonight is to add, um, an option of a monthly subscription fee, um, in addition to our quarterly and annual fee. The monthly fee would be fifty dollars, I broke it down and tried to make it equivalent to what a monthly, what a monthly cost would be. Because right now, we just have the quarterly of one twenty-five and the annually of five hundred. And then there is also, I don't know how you want, do you want me to keep going, or do you wanna?
I just wanna, I need a second.
Okay.
I have a question on that.
Sure.
Mister Chair, did you wanna take, there's really two separate motions, did you wanna take them separately, like beacon first and then vehicle second?
Yep.
I guess my question, I, I know beacon's changed recently, hasn't it? I mean, prior to, I don't know what point in time, you used to be able to see imagery, correct?
Yep.
When did that change, I guess?
Um, a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
I was looking into this and discovered that it wasn't, um, it was available to the public, and as we discussed in the email, if there was any issues, we can definitely bring it up, and the imagery is a lot, um, it costs a lot, and I feel that it is needed for a subscription to view that.
How many users do we have for beacon, like paid users?
Um, I did not look at that number, I apologize, I can look at that and let you know, Dan.
And then, how much do we pay a year for beacon?
Beacon's annual fee for twenty twenty-four will be thirteen thousand three hundred. So we are, um, currently in the black with that.
And then?
Our subscriptions paid.
Is that for the county, or, Gary, you pay more, don't you, with your online?
This is last year for the online permitting.
Okay.
So the geo permits is separate than the beacon property information, yes.
Okay.
I guess, Michelle, the question I have, and I, I, I think I know the answer, but on your, uh, document that you submitted, under current, you have quarterly one twenty-five, annual five hundred, setup fee twenty-five. Under the proposed, you have those same fees plus the fifty dollars.
Correct. Yep, that's the only thing I'm changing, is adding a monthly option for subscription if, if individuals or businesses would like to do it monthly instead of quarterly or annually.
No, I, I really like how you're trying to look at ways to, you know, save dollars and... But I, I guess I'm, this is a tough one, because I, I know for a long, long time, imagery has been available to the public.
It is available. Our counter is open.
Yeah, but the whole purpose of, of beacon, that I, I recall from years prior, was that people could go and look at stuff at home and not have to come in, and I don't know, I guess, I like, I, you know, the taxpayers are paying for beacon in the first place, and, and you have some examples in here of, like, sales searches and property dollar, uh, modules, and I would agree with you, all of that should be under a subscription, but I think, you know, basic imagery where a citizen can check on something at home and not have to come in here and not have to wait in line and do that, I, I think that's something that we could...
The only thing about that is that this isn't basic imagery.
What's aerial imagery?
It's aerial imagery that we've paid for.
Yep. Yeah, we get to fly over every three years.
The taxpayers paid for too.
And we caution with the city.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I mean, there is lots of basic imagery out there, and it does not have the detail of...
Yeah, but if a taxpayer is at home and they wanna look at their own property with this, they won't be able to do it. And prior to this, they would have been able to do it, so I, I think it's a little bit of a step back personally, and, uh, I know there are other options available, I, I think maybe before we decide this, let's, let's look at some other options. I know District Three has a pretty affordable option, maybe we have them come in and do a presentation before we decide on this. Because we have a potential, everybody wants to save tax dollars, and maybe we look at those options.
I guess, so, um, if the issue is the aerial imagery, um, I know you emailed me and I replied, I didn't get a response that it was an issue. I've had three individual contact me, besides you, Dan, um, nobody had contacted me else besides that, that needed the imagery, and they were all answered, and most, some of them were on the planning commission, so they need the imagery. So there's, you know, there's other ways that it is available, it's not...
Yeah.
Additionally, I, I, I went on it too, I like, went in as a guest, and I, you know, decided, okay, let's see how much the imagery, you know, negatively affects my use, my ability to use the tools. It really didn't, um, simply because you have the other overlays of the, of the roadmaps and, and so forth, and so...
Yes. And I did go through the other counties in South Dakota that have beacon, and looked at which ones have the imagery available and which ones don't. It was sixty percent do not, forty percent do, so really right in the middle. And it, the ones that did were larger, bigger counties, where I'm assuming they have a bigger tax base, so that that's available. So we're just trying to get the cost for it in, back for it, that's why.
What, what do we expect to generate off of, off of this? I know you don't have the numbers for the paid subscriptions now, but, you know, what do we, what do we expect that we will generate by this?
By adding the fifty dollars? Honestly, I don't, I don't have an expectation, I just want it to be more available to the public. There are a lot of appraisers, for example, that caller office, and say, oh, I need the comparables for this, and I, you need, I'm not gonna, they need to come down and do their comparables or get a subscription, and the only option they have currently is a, a quarter. When they have one job in Yankton County, a monthly subscription would help them to do that job, or even two jobs.
Yep. I guess I, I feel the public has a, a right to know, and we're not gonna generate likely very much income from this. And to, to me, transparency and openness is more important than generating a, you know, a few dollars, and having the ability of, of people to look at this. A lot of the imagery we use for planning and zoning is taken right off of beacon. And so we're using that in our official capacity, and I know the planning commission is, and now if somebody's at home and they want, you know, to see the same thing, they're not able to, where, before they could be. So I, I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, at the very least, keeping the basic imagery on beacon as for the public. These advanced features, like you mentioned, I'm fine with that being a subscription for the heavy users, but not for the basic one.
So, so just to be clear, though, what we have here before us is actually just talking about adding a monthly subscription, that has nothing to do with the actual...
But, but right...
You're okay with the monthly of subscription?
I, I would be, for the advanced stuff, but I believe, well, I, I feel that we need to have the basic imagery open to the citizen, like it has been for, ever since I've been here.
Okay, let me ask a question, um, District Three was here and made a presentation on this, uh, what, six months?
Two years ago, roughly.
Two, two years ago? Time flies.
A year and a half.
If I'm adding this right, the difference between, uh, uh, the proposed plan and the current plan is, uh, uh, sixteen hundred and twenty-five dollars, uh, versus, uh, five hundred, uh, thousand twenty-five dollars, so it's six hundred do, uh, six hundred dollars.
So, um, and maybe this, maybe you guys are looking at all of it, I guess there's really three point, three different things that I'm bringing forward, is adding a fifty dollar option for subscribers, and then looking at the different options available, which is the Schneider proposal, and then a vehicle. So, I'm not sure where you're getting your numbers done.
I was just going off your little...
Of the subscriptions?
Submission, yeah.
Yeah.
Or the...
You had current, one twenty-five, uh, quarterly, five hundred, annually, twenty-five setup. Same for proposed, except fifty dollars added monthly.
Right.
So it's, uh...
So we would...
Six hundred dollars, so we're only talking about six hundred dollars, old to new.
Yep.
Now, with that said, what was, what was District Three offering?
That was a completely different product than what we have.
They had it at the County Commission Association, they had, District Three had a booth up there, and the quote that they gave, that we pay with, uh, DOE and, uh, the online permitting software, we pay about twenty-four thousand dollars a year. And District Three, for something similar, or, or the same, is four thousand dollars a year. So by, and I, I almost think we need to maybe take a little bit deeper dive in that. We could save the taxpayers, you know, twenty thousand dollars a year just by doing that, and that's, that's not small potatoes. It's something we should, I think we owe it to them to look into.
I, I guess I thought you guys had in the past with the previous, um, director, and it was, um, in my opinion, not the same quality of product.
Is, is that something, though, for, and I'm not saying switching and just doing whatever, just because it's cheaper, but is that something that we need to look at, to like Dan says, to give our taxpayers an option?
So I, I feel that Dan wants the imagery for the, anybody without a subscription. We can change that. I talked with Ryan before, we, we discussed some things, I looked at what other counties were doing, and when we first started beacon, we had a public versus a subscription checklist of what, so we could easily tell anybody what we had, what you could get with a subscription versus not, and there wasn't an imagery on there. So I don't know when it changed, honestly, and I tried to get a hold of beacon a couple of different times. They're looking into some other things for me, so I think that's just the delay of why they didn't get back to me. That's the reason that it was turned off, is because when we first started, it wasn't there. I felt that with Ryan and I consultation, we felt that it was better for the subscribers than the non-subscribers. With a non-subscriber, you do have multiple different layers available. Lot of, um, other counties, recent, locally around here, do not offer imagery with the beacon website, unless it's a paid subscription. Some don't even offer roads and parcel layer, like we do.
I guess I, I'd be okay with the fifty dollar subscription, I'd like, um, the imagery available to the public without a subscription, if that's the hangup and...
I'm, I'm gonna make a motion, just to like, let's get, start moving on this, I'm gonna move that we approve the fifty dollar monthly subscription.
Have a motion, uh, to approve the...
As an option, and that'll, that'll contain everything, correct, that, all...
That, just adding a fifty dollar monthly subscription option.
I'm gonna try...
I can go along with that.
I'm, I'm gonna try to, uh, initiate a new process, motion, a second, and then discussion. Because if nobody seconds the motion, we aren't gonna go to a vote.
I, I can support that, and then we'll go to the, the imagery.
Got a motion, and Dan, a second. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 I'd, I'd like to make a motion now to allow imagery available to the public without a subscription. And then I'd also like, uh, us to get another presentation, um, from District Three on their product, so...
Would you want beacon to come back as well, since they're both the same?
I say we do a head-to-head, a little capitalism and competition is good for everybody, so maybe we schedule a, a head-to-head, uh, competition and, and see whichever project will serve our county the best.
They presented both of those not that long ago.
Well, these guys weren't on the board.
Two years ago, and, and Ryan and I were not on that.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So I, I would second Dan's motion to, to include the imaging free to the public, or, wi, with the subscription, but also...
Free and with the subscription, okay.
Free and the prescription, and I would also, uh, a, agree with him that we should have, uh, a co, not a competition, but bo, both, whoever's gonna offer something, and, and maybe there's a third, a third company that does it too, that as, as you as the new equalization head can bring those to us as, uh, to look at.
Sure.
And I'd like to do both in the same meeting, because I know before we had one, and then a couple of months went by and we had the other. It's hard to compare apples to apples.
Have a motion by Dan, a second by John. To, uh... Do the, uh, fifty dollar, uh, addition.
We did that one already.
We did that one, to, uh...
Include, uh, the imagery, uh, for, for free and in a subscription, and then to have, uh, both beacon and District Three, or really anybody who wants to offer these services to come and give a presentation, so...
We've got it, we have a motion and a second, uh, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose the same motion carries.
I vote against.
Okay. Vehicle acquisition.
Um, I guess, so do you guys wanna talk about the beacon add-ons at this point, or not? Because that's completely different as well. There's options available that we can add to the beacon website, at a cost, of course, but, um, there are tools that I thought the public and the, the subscription would really like, I spoke with some realtors.
Mister Chairman, I think, I, I, this is a great thing to discuss, but I think that's something that we could incorporate into the, when beacon and District Three and whoever else comes in, comes in, so...
I agree.
Just so you know, I believe their fees, so these dollars amount that you see were only for sixty days.
They always use that. Everybody uses that.
They are going up.
Everything, yeah.
Vehicle acquisition.
So, um... After doing building permits, well, currently doing building permits, I didn't realize how horrible our cars are. We currently have one reliable vehicle, we have three out there. Thank goodness Jeff was moving cars to strike the parking lot, because one of the windows is down and it was dead, and he taped up the window for us. It's dead out there, it's, um, they have a lot of issues, so I guess I'm asking for, um, to use the money in our budget for, um, using the state bid to buy a replacement vehicle for the, one of them. And then, um, Sheriff Chrissy is fortunate enough to pass over another one to replace the other one, that's not very good.
So you have three vehicles?
Yep, currently.
Two thousand four, a twenty sixteen, and a twenty seventeen?
Yep.
For, for six, for six employees, is that correct? So what, what is, I mean, a twenty seventeen, it seems like that's a good vehicle, what, what is wrong with it, like?
That's our good one.
Okay, what's the twenty sixteen?
The twenty seventeen, um, doesn't have a heat. The twenty sixteen, the tires are completely bald, there is some kind of noise. Yes, they are all each repairable, I just feel that the... Yes, they are all each repairable. I just feel that the, we have an opportunity to use these one-time savings from being short-staffed To spend county dollars wisely for a reliable vehicle that is not gonna be a liability for the county. We took the twenty sixteen out. We are taking it out. There is some type of, something with the alignment, the ball joint, the axle. I'm not quite sure. CV axle. I don't, I don't know. I'm not a mechanic. Something going out. It, I, I drove it and it's very scary. I was glad I was driving and not one of my staff. I did not feel comfortable having them drive it and the other one doesn't start, so.
What, why doesn't it start?
I'm assuming the battery is dead. It got a new battery not that long ago. It is the oldest vehicle that we have. Again, it was a surplus from the sheriff. Um, I just feel that why keep throwing money and throwing money into these? Hopefully, again, the sheriff will, in their timeframe, move vehicles and, um, as you can see, we've got numerous vehicles from the sheriff at no cost For many, many years. The last time we purchased a vehicle was in two thousand, um, seven.
I guess I'd feel, you know, twenty sixteen, I, I would think would be repairable. If I had a twenty sixteen, I'd at least have an estimate of What it would cost to repair that compared to an, a, a brand-new vehicle. And I, I know there's, there is some funding left over in your budget, but You know, that doesn't mean that it needs to be spent. I mean, I, I think that's, that's a big problem we see in Washington as they have money and they Spend it and that's why we're trillions and trillions of dollars in debt. Uh, I guess I would like some sort of mechanic report from these and if it can't be repaired, I'm, I'm with you. But if it's a battery or something like that.
I think, to me, there's two issues here. One's a reliable, uh, long-term safe veal- vehicle that can use to travel. If those other two vehicles are in danger of having an accident, causing an accident, we need to get those looked at and repaired.
Exactly right.
So my suggestion would be to ask Mike if his, uh, crew out there could take a look at them and, and just estimate what, what's Their, what their status is, what they can do to upgrade them and, and he, he, he's got all, he can figure the expenses out or close enough for our use.
I did call, um, a maintenance and repair shop to get the estimates. And I didn't want to spend more money on something just to get an estimate of a vehicle that we're probably gonna surplus. Hopefully this year, especially with the sheriff in their passing over of vehicles. So I didn't know which one to pick, pick and which one to do, so that's why I'm here just asking for one. The other thing is with, um, to get it within this budget year. We don't wanna go into next budget year. And the, what I would like to do is currently without a reliable vehicle, We take our personal vehicles to conferences and school for our education, so we have to pay mileage on that. So I want to be able to have a reliable vehicle for that, so we don't have to pay reimbursement.
Well, the other, I mean, the other departments we could prob- I know, well, Clay County was here today and they have, they have one vehicle, I think, for the majority of their departments and I'm sure we could get, zoning has a good reliable vehicle that you could probably loan for those types of things. I, I just.
And that's something that I wanted to look into as well with, once we get a reliable vehicle for that, I was planning on bringing that up at a department head meeting for sure.
So, so the seventeen Ford Explorer is a good vehicle?
Yep.
The sixteen may need some CVC, CVS joints or something like that.
It was around a three thousand dollar estimate from shooting from the hip without having them come in.
Sure. And, and, and if we took it out to Mike at the highway department, their shop, they could look at it and, and probably cut that by A quarter.
Yeah.
Um, and, and a sixteen should be, my pickups are fifteen. Uh, so, but, but I don't want you to drive it unsafe. Don't, don't misunderstand.
Well, that's the other thing is we, right now, we are out doing building permits. I'm not gonna get a, a reliable vehicle tomorrow, but it is, It is a very high concern of mine.
Uh, and I understand that. So the sixteen we can send out there probably tomorrow and.
It's been out, but I don't.
Out to the highway department is what I'm saying, to get looked at and fixed or whatever.
If their time allows, yeah.
We have a spare pickup to the department.
Yeah, I, there, there's spare vehicles.
And the only reason that I bring this up, Michelle, is I don't, I don't, I don't mean to cut you short or have you driving something that's unsafe. But at the same token, we do need to look at it down the road and, and, and expenses are, are growing. We all know that. Um, um, we've, we've got a highway department project that's coming up next year that's gonna cost the county a lot of money. And we're, we're prepared for that, but as I mentioned in our last meeting, I, and I know wages is something that we have to abide by and, and not Cut or whatever, but I feel that there's other, other portions of every department in this county That, and I said something about cutting two to three percent if possible. Now, I, I understand it's hard to cut expenses.
And the budget that I submitted this past year was a decrease in.
And, and I, I, I understand all of that. I'm just saying that we all need to.
And I, and I understand it too. I just, there was an opportunity to get a reliable vehicle.
If we can assist you and help you on a vehicle, we certainly will. I just don't see it at this point in time To purchase a, a newer vehicle, especially if the sheriff is ready to, to donate, you know, to get rid of, swap out some vehicles.
But we're still under the issue of, basically, there's no travel outside of Yankton County with our current vehicles. You know, we, even district meetings.
You know, and, and I understand that and, and there's, you know, we've, there, there should be other vehicles that we can figure out. And if, If it comes down to the point where if you gotta go to appear to a conference and you gotta drive your own personal vehicle, turn in a receipt for the.
Right, and but that's also.
That's what we all do.
Yes.
Right, and we do as well, but when we go to Rapid City, of course, we, I mean, you've seen the claims. Yeah, that was a big mileage.
Okay, we, we understand, uh, the issues, uh, do I have a motion?
Uh, Mister Chair, I would just like to maybe table this motion until we get some more information. And I guess I'd, I'd like An idea of how many, um, county vehicles we really have and maybe some of their ages and, um, certainly I would say the unsafe vehicles quit driving immediately. And don't, don't take them out on the road. And Jeff, you had a vehicle if they need to borrow an extra one. And then Gary, you have the zoning vehicle if they need to borrow that?
Sure.
So, let's, let's figure, so no unsafe vehicles go out and then let's, let's kinda get a list of these vehicles.
Let's add a motion to that effect.
Okay. A motion to table.
Technically, it's not a motion to table, it's a motion to postpone.
Postpone.
Yeah. I, I think we need more information before we can act. So, motion to postpone this till we have more information.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
I do have one thing on, on the, on the discussion. I think what we need to do is get those vehicles out to Mike at the highway department as soon as possible. And have him look them over and get us an estimate on, on the repairs, what it's gonna take to get them roadworthy and safe.
Yep. Agreed, a hundred percent.
You guys gotta talk to Mike.
I, I will take care of that tomorrow. I'll take care of it.
Maybe have Mike's, maybe have Mike's guys take them out there too and trail them if they need them.
Yeah.
I have a hesitation on this simply cause yes, um, we have, we have a department that has been shorthanded all, all, all year. So they have extra funds. This isn't, this is, be a new vehicle, so that means that it should be more reliable for the years to come. If we don't know what we may be seeing next year and we may be in the same spot next year, maybe in a worse spot. So I, I, I really, if we're postponing this, then we really do need to address this next meeting.
I, I, just because we have money doesn't mean we have to spend. And when the citizens look and they say, a twenty, I, I drive a two thousand seven And I, I know your vehicle's older than twenty sixteen and his vehicle is. And the citizens at home are saying, well, they have a twenty sixteen vehicle and they're buying a, a brand-new one. I don't think that's responsible Use of county tax dollars unless we have all the information. And we can look at other departments. Maybe the sheriff has an additional vehicle. I, I would rather have The brand-new vehicles go to, to the law enforcement and the, the other one where it's a matter of public safety.
I think we had enough discussion.
Okay, I, I just was like, we've, we have to, we do want to get this then into the next meeting and address this issue then.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone it until the next meeting.
Well, until we have the information we need.
Well, we want the information by the next meeting.
We'll have the information on these three vehicles by the next meeting. We have now, we have three weeks instead of only two till our next meeting, so.
Longer month.
Okay.
Do you have to vote?
Vote. Vote.
Yeah, I guess we do have to vote, cause there's motion, you may be second.
John second, John, or Dan motioned, John seconded.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 Pose the same. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Jeff?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Speaking of expenditures.
Nope.
Sorry to bring it up, but we're looking at a new chiller. And we obviously don't have any pricing yet. We need to, need to know if, if, uh, you guys wanna go forward with something like that for next year. Getting, getting bids or if we need to get bids. Um, I have been talking to a gentleman and he says we can go through Sourcewell and they're kind of a, We are part of them. We have a subscription to their, their services. And basically they'll go out and make sure that whomever gets the contract for, for doing the chiller Is, is only able to market up a certain amount. It's kind of a government guaranteed pricing. And for, for the product and for the services.
Jeff, for, uh, viewers at home, um, could you explain the situation? It's, it's the, basically the air conditioning unit for the government center that's Twenty years old roughly?
Twenty, twenty-one years old.
How many times has that broke down this summer?
This year, I think it was six times.
Six times. And it actually almost melted the electrical panel, correct?
Yeah, it arced, flash arced inside and melted the fuses and we had to basically remove it from the system.
And the rough estimated cost of a replacement is?
I'm just throwing a bulb.
Provide any more background?
Yeah, so, um, so what, what we wanna do, oh, with permission, otherwise, uh, no use going forward, but, uh, What we wanna do is reassess the building and make sure the heat BT is calculated correctly, because we feel that it's undersized. Um, cause even at the ninety-degree day, that thing's running a hundred percent. And end of the day, which normally, end of the day, our upstairs is, is warmer than what it should be and what it's calling for. Even, uh, during the normal, uh, during the hot spells, we, we leave it run all time. It's running twenty-four, seven.
Twenty-four hours a day.
Just to keep the building, you know. Otherwise it unoccupies after your meeting and then it doesn't kick on till six, about four, five o'clock in the morning. And then brings it back up during normal, normal temperatures. It handles it just fine, but, uh, Then, uh, higher degree days and longer periods of time, it, it, uh, we don't keep up, so.
Mister Chairman, I'd, I'd like to just recognize Jeff and his team for a moment when they were fighting this at the, well, end of summer. Ninety, hundred degrees day, he was here day and night and his team and they did everything they could to keep the system going and, uh, That took a lot of guts and determination and I just wanna give you credit. You did everything you possibly could, so, thank you for that.
The other thing, it's not like you can just order one and get one next week, so.
Are we talking more than fifty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Hundred and fifty, roughly.
We'll have to bid that, Deb? Is that, would have to bid that? Good.
Yeah, we'll have to get somebody to write up a, a spec.
Are you looking for a motion to bid? Are you just telling us or?
Well, and like you said, um, I don't know, I, I understand, I mean, it's over the threshold. But again, I've heard, and I don't, the, the person that I talked to From Johnson Control said that you don't need to do a bid if you go through Sourcewell, as long as you're a member of their cooperation, which we are. And, um, I've not been able to get a hold of Sourcewell. They haven't contacted me back. To, so that I can get, cause I don't know anything about it, honestly. I mean, I'm just going by hearsay. So with, if we were able to do this, we wouldn't have to do a bidding process, but what I, so basically what I would like a motion for is If we can go through Sourcewell, if we find out that that's legal to do this through Sourcewell And that we don't need to do the bidding process, that we go ahead and do that, that way. And if not, if we need to do a bidding process, then we put it out for bids. Because like Dennis, like Dennis.
Cooler businesses are in town.
Excuse me?
How many businesses that could do this work are in town?
Well, the, the problem kinda goes down to the fact that, um, the Medicis system is Their system. So if somebody comes in with basically the same or comparable unit and puts it in and it doesn't jive up, It's gonna cost the county time and money for someone to get someone from Johnson Control to come in and say, We need to get everything to work with that, where if we have, again, if, if we can do it through Sourcewell, or if they win a bid And they do it, it's their system. They come in, they, they put it in and it works. There's no monkeying around. Everything is same, same.
The, the one thing about Sourcewell, it kinda narrows down what the price is gonna be for you. There's, you know, it's pretty much set in stone. There's no, they, they tell anybody or whoever's able to, to, uh, to bid it or whoever, you know, Whoever gets the job, what, what the markup's gonna be and that's it. There's no extra, you know, so then really all you're paying is the install fee on top of the, on top of the product.
De- Deb, how would you advise us to, to move forward with this? Would you, would you wanna wo- look into this to see if it Meets the South Dakota bid laws or what? I just want us to be in compliance with that.
I think if Jeff would hear from Sourcewell and then contact, it sounds like that, that would be permissible. Because obviously they do it for all sorts of government agencies.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just not familiar with them, but again, this might be one that Jeff, would you be okay if they just put it on the agenda For that first date in November and hopefully.
By then I could have every, everything, you know, you know, basically.
I think that's the best course.
And, and like I said, we just wanna get everything in front of you guys as quick as possible, because like Dennis mentioned, It's, could be six months or more before we get a new unit in after everything is completed and ordered. And then installation and we don't wanna wait till August.
So that's a year.
Where, where's this Sourcewell's base of operation?
Minnesota. And they've got, I looked on their website and they've got Aberdeen, Brown County and a bunch of other counties and municipalities From all over South Dakota, Minnesota, Iowa, all over the United States are part, are members of that society.
So, so in the meantime, you, you guys are gonna do an analysis and see if, you know, our system is sized correctly because it may be undersized?
Yep.
And then, once we find out what, what to order and if it's possible, you'll bring it back to us and.
Right.
We'll either do a bid or go through that.
And, and just so you guys know, I mean, the reason is, is that the, the compressors are getting old and tired. Um, they're working at a hundred percent capacity all the time. The new, the new units, whether they're, whoever they're from, We're gonna make sure that they're big enough so that they can cycle in and out, so that all the compressors aren't working all the time. So there's one down, Four, five or six running, and then they swap around so that one doesn't, they don't all get tired at the same time, basically. Um, the chiller outside, the, the coils are starting to deteriorate and I don't know who did it. Uh, it was prior to me, but somebody used a pressure washer on the fins.
Ooh.
And we've been working on trying to straighten them out since I started and since before then. They're just bent over.
Aluminum's rotting out.
Yeah.
So we're losing our heat.
So like I said, just, just so you know, I mean, we're, this, again, back to basically the car thing. It's not that we wanna replace this.
Sure.
But if we wait until July or August of next year and we have no ventilation in here, the building's gonna probably have to shut down.
Yep. And we're gonna get more of these issues as the building keeps aging as well.
So I don't think we have to get a motion. I think it's mostly just go out to get the information. Um, get the information from Sourcewell, come back here on the next meeting and at that point we'll either approve that or we'll have to bid it out.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Oh, Dennis introduce yourself, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Dennis Evans, Johnson Controls, uh, been, uh, lived in Yankton for all my, over twelve years. Uh, been Johnson Control for seven and been handling your, uh, facility here for five, so. And I've been at this podium before, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
State's attorney.
I think, uh, Paul's on the desk.
The haircut's the same.
Same, right, okay. Well, I'm gonna, I wanna make sure everybody's got the same. You have to highlight it at the bottom. So that we're talking apples and apples. Somewhere along the line, I got the wrong, but you guys got the wrong, whether I sent it, both by, by Paul. But I wanna make sure the word. But I wanna make sure that we're, when we're talking, we're talking the same stuff, yeah.
Yep, I saw it.
Oh. Okay. So.
In the, in the verbiage, when, when, I know, I, I watched your guys' meeting the next day, cause I heard there was some, Rob had called me and said there was some concern. But one of the lines, it's highlighted at the bottom of the page and we'll go right to that first, was that, the, the, the line, or the, what was missing out of that was that systems that are monitored by an outside party. Was the way it was originally written, anybody that built a new house had to have a Knox box and that was not the intent. The intent was that if, if you have a third party, no matter who it is, because when that third party gets alarmed, they call our dispatch and then they get a hold of Larry or Tim. Oh, and by the way, I got Larry and Tim in the back room from the Yankton Fire Department. So questions about the details of the Knox box, they're the experts. I'm here just bringing the ordinance or the resolution toward you guys.
Larry, did you have an example of the Knox box we could see? I'm gonna make you guys come, come on up too, Tim. We gotta, gotta welcome our, our firefighters.
Camera's right here, so look up.
There we go. Welcome, guys.
So this is a, a sample of one of the boxes. There's several kinds. This is pretty much what's on this building already. It's been there since the building was built. Uh, this is a sample key just for this box. Lit comes off, someone, they have different features with hinges, they're all kind of different models out there if you wanna pass it on.
They're very handy, they're bolt grade.
Uh, we chose the Knox box program because that was pretty much a nationwide fire department.
I don't realize. Probably ten pounds at least.
Yeah, at least, yeah.
Any, anyway, that box is the box that we chose to start with in eighteen ninety-eight. Uh, that's nationwide used through the fire departments all over. There's only one other box out there and it doesn't have any UL approvals or anything like that. So that gives us one key, fits all the boxes in Yankton. Um, we have a subkey for twelve buildings, for the police department, for the schools. Um, the only access are the, is the fire department, the ambulance service, and then those subkeys by the police department.
So would you, I'm sure you'd recommend, but what do we do to say to like an apartment complex that's already been existing apartment complex to say, hey, you need to put this on your building so that our folks can get in there in a case of an emergency?
So how we usually handle that is, uh, I'll take the three, in the county, the three, three-story apartment buildings above the marina, they all have one each building.
Okay.
Um, they, one building was existing and then when the two new ones were built, they put them on. And the reason for that is they had some alarm situations. So we don't actively go after them, the existing buildings, but if they have some situations, but then the other side of that is the new construction.
Sure. I think it's a win-win situation for everybody involved and.
But the, the thing too, Larry, make sure you mention that, that is just not the only option. The Knox box key could also be a switch or a padlock uh, on a gated system where though they have the arm raised up, it isn't that box. I mean, what, cause according what the resolution says, it could be one of three ways that whoever wants to do it. So I mean, it isn't just, we're not bolting that on a gate.
Sure.
And we made the changes on page two, uh, that weren't in there because I know Dan made a comment and we had talked is that if he wanted to gate his farm place, we're not requiring, but if there's multiple homes there and then they're also, then they're alarmed, we have to have a, at least we feel there needs to be a means.
Sure.
And again, these guys use them, I don't, I won't have a key. I'm here to fight or bring it toward you guys for these guys. Uh, because I think it's a win-win, you know, and even heck in Westerville now, if we get some bigger constructions and, you know, businesses in town, we actually got two going up here in the next month or so.
That's awesome.
Uh, we're gonna require that to be put on there because if there is something going on and they go on vacation and, you know, out here by the lake area, we have a lot of vacation homes. If they get a fire alarm going out, they're gonna be, I mean, I know they'll just break the door down, but who's really liable for the door where most people that do fire alarm systems do put non-boxes on their system because they want these guys to come out and make sure that everything's okay and to reset the system. So we wanted to make sure, or I wanted to make sure that, that what we presented, somewhere along the line, I, I might've rewrote something and then sent it again cause this is going back and forth trying to get this between Larry and I and then with Rob and Deb and I think I sent the wrong one out the first time. But this is the one that we wanted to have in place.
I think the changes you made are good and they make it clear that it's just, you know, monitored by a, you know, outside party instead of somebody who's not. I think that's a good, a good change you guys made.
You called me that next day and I, you sent me, no, we don't want every new house, you know, but that's how it stayed in there.
Yep, yep.
But that wasn't the intent, so.
I, I would, I would make a motion that we approve this resolution and, uh, compliment or, or assist our, our emergency personnel and, and make this as, as stringent as we possibly can because I think we, I think it's necessary that, that there is a way that they can get in without having to, you know, wonder, well, 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 what, what, well, how can we get into this place or, you know, if you go out to the river and, and there's a locked gate on there. Yeah, we don't wanna wreck a fire truck driving through a steel gate.
No, Tim was like, no. I, I will add, I will add that, um, uh, I took the key off my ring and took it to Hanson Locksmith and asked him, I says, can you make me ten of those? And he recognized right away it's a patented key and nobody can duplicate that key. So that, I think it's important that people that are buying them know that, okay?
The cost of these is, what was the cost of the box?
Oh, anywhere from two hundred to four fifty, five hundred dollars or even higher. It depends, you can get electronic surveillance on them too. I mean, they, they can make it so when you open the lid, it, it sets the alarm off in the building so that, you know, of course the user's gonna go in and reset that alarm, but that is, the feature is available.
So this is a, uh, this is an ordinance and we, Deb, we have to have, uh, two readings of this, don't we?
So resolution.
Resolution.
Resolution, okay, alright. Um, and then enforcement, you know, like, like I said, the places that are, are existing places that doesn't have them, we're not actually gonna be going out and trying to find them, it's just, we're gonna have to catch them when things happen.
It'll be an educational piece.
Yeah.
We've got a lot of places that say that, you know, if you'd have something, we'd probably do it, but right now we don't have any, so we're not gonna. We don't have the time to go look.
Yeah, and then, and then it'll be on, it'll be on us to make sure that we are, and ma- making sure that these Knox boxes are on the, on the proper properties as they're being developed.
Paul will take care of that once you, Paul.
Alright, yeah.
Well, we're, we're. And I, and I think we can, you know, through borough building permit process or whatever, we can say, you know.
Maybe it's, maybe something that we might wanna have in our checklist for the planning and zoning.
It's a good idea, that's a good idea.
I agree.
I have.
As long as we know a process can be needed for that.
I have a, a motion to, uh, approve the resolution on Knox box.
And I'll second it.
I have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All is the same. Motion carries.
Thanks, guys. Good seeing you.
Oh, really? Get some photos of that.
Yeah, they're taking a lot.
Alright, thank you, guys.
Yep. Item eight has been, uh, moved forward to the next, uh, meeting. Item nine. Planning, uh, commission and board of adjustment bylaws. That's commission and Gary.
Don had asked me after the last state convention meeting that, uh, we, we should look at some board of adjustment bylaws and, and Cottington County was presenting and so I drafted it up for you and uh, you can basically decide if you wanna move forward or not on it.
In the background of Cottington Co- County, was it, uh, their, uh, they, they've kinda taken the lead in the state on doing this?
No, they've been doing it for quite a while and so they, they put it in written form so that people could basically just have examples of how they feel a meeting should run smoothly and, and, uh, so they, these were basically their suggestions throughout this document.
Okay, I'm gonna try this. Do I have a motion, uh, to approve the draft copy?
You know, you know, Mr. Chairman, I think there's a, a lot of really good information here and I read through it and I, I think it's, it's a lot of good things, but I look at our zoning ordinance and our zoning ordinance has a lot of the same things in there and I just don't know how those two will be, will mesh if we adopt bylaws.
I'm trying to move to this motion second.
Okay.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. Discussion now, Dan.
Yeah, so I don't know how those two will, you know, necessarily mesh. They're, they're pretty, they're pretty close and Cottington County's a little different than us in that their planning commission, which not, is not elected, is their board of adjustment. And so you might have, um, people who have maybe not so much experience on some of these boards and I think this, this would be excellent for them, but I just, I just
If, if I'm right, it didn't change much from the, the one that we had in existence, did it?
No, I mean, and it, it could be used as a guide too, whether you adopt it or not. That's, that's one option you could go by also.
I mean, as a, as a guide, I think would be, that would be fine. It gives great examples of how to make motions and how to prepare yourself and I think that's all excellent. I guess my concern is just how it's gonna interact with, when we do board of adjustment and those types of things.
Speaker at the state meetings, main, uh, direction in this conversation was that, uh, if, if you follow these, you lessen the chance of liability, uh, on lawsuits. And so it, it, it just seemed to me like it's a document that could be valuable to hand. It's, there's a lot of stuff in there.
It is, it, it is an in-depth bunch of, uh, bunch of his suggestions.
I, I do agree with Dan a little bit. It's like, there's a lot of in-depth stuff here and like, have we really gone through this to make sure it does not have any type of conflict with what's already in our ordinances? Cause we really, I think we really do want these to jive together, uh, well, before adopting it.
Yep.
Well, that's Gary's.
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
You know, and I, I think, I think like everybody said, this is a good document that we could, we could, uh, go by. Um, and, and if Gary can go through or we can go through the ordinance and, and make sure there's no conflicts of interest in, between this document and our zoning ordinances, but, uh,
I think.
I'd much rather read through five pages of this than read seventy-some pages of an ordinance just to, to figure out what's going on.
You gotta, you gotta, you're gonna have to read the zoning ordinance anyway to, you're not getting away from that, but, but, yeah.
I understand, I understand, but in a, but in a, in a short conversation, I'd just flip through this.
The basic amount of this is, is on how the, the meetings are held and, and it's not, anything to do with zoning laws or rules or anything else. It's just how the organization's running, what rights do the citizens have and what rights do the, does the commission have?
That is correct.
And how it should be done.
Yeah, and I think, I think you'd found one mention of the Cottington County in there and then the only other thing I noticed in here was that, uh, uh, early on in the section, um, items to be included in an agenda, I think the one thing in there that should be on there is public comment. We don't have that listed.
Good example, yeah.
And so that should be in there.
May- maybe when, next time we do strategic planning, we could discuss this further. I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of good things that deal with zoning ordinance and then codified law, it talks about open meetings, it talks about the, the time of our meeting being six PM on the first and third Tuesday at the government. I mean, it goes into depth and, uh, that's good, but then you gotta, you gotta be aware, it may, it has to jive with our zoning too, like you said, Ryan, so.
A huge amount of it is, is on parliamentary procedures. And that's trying to be fair to the citizens. So that they know what rules they have to operate by. Okay, we've had some discussion. All those in favor of adopting the uh, adjustments of the bylaws? Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Three to one?
Uh, we're gonna adopt them tonight?
Yes.
Okay, I, I just, I can't until I think we look into this further and make sure it messi- meshes, meshes, uh, you know, I, I just don't wanna have a conflict between our, what's in our zoning or, I mean, if I'm a planning commissioner, do I follow this? Or do I follow this and what happens if they're different?
The motion dies? I think this is another two-thirds deal, right?
Uh, it says at the bottom, adoption or amendment of the bylaws takes effect following a successful vote. So I think it's a simple majority.
It describes what the vote is in the, in the document.
Yeah.
It's two-thirds of the people present on the, on the board. That's sixty-six percent. We've got sixty percent approved and twenty percent didn't, so the motion dies. Now, my question is, what do you want Gary to do to bring it back?
Maybe there, there's some good things in here. I guess what I'd like to do is maybe take the good things we really like, add it to our zoning ordinance and then we just have one document as opposed to two separate ones.
I think, I think the, the purpose of bylaws is to help facilitate the running of meetings. I think that would be over, overburden of our ordinance. That makes our ordinances even longer and fuller of things that are not so relevant to the ordinances. I think there's a place for ordinance and there's a place for bylaws.
I'd agree and I, I think, you know, if we can task Gary on making sure that there's no, uh, conflicts between the two and bring us, you know, even maybe it's a simpler, uh, bylaw for operating a meeting. I, I guess that's, that's where I would look at it as, as tasking Gary to make sure there's no conflicts between the ordinances and the, you know, like you mentioned, Dan.
Well, I, I, but I, I've talked to Gary two or three times in the office and I, I think he's been working on this and I, in my previous conversations with, with him, uh, in the gate, that I'm pretty satisfied he has, uh, resolved.
Yeah, and we can certainly, I can certainly take one more look at it and bring it back to the next meeting. That's not a problem, but I think it's pretty close to where it needs to be, so.
I've read through the bylaws twice and I've, still haven't found anything that I can really know that's not in the ordinances, so.
Right.
I, I, I have that concern, but I haven't found any evidence of anything, so.
That's not a problem.
And I think you went to, uh, what the state would at least, uh, re- uh, recommend that, uh, the Cottington County group, uh, is pretty, pretty well established as doing the right thing and avoiding lawsuits because of their procedures that they put in that document they had. Okay. Gary, go ahead with, uh, land, cattle and rezone two, second reading.
Uh, first time we've, we've gone to the board of adjustment.
Mr. Chair, uh, it should be not board of adjustment, it's, uh, uh, rezone.
This is rezone.
Oh, this is rezoned, sorry.
Yep, yep.
Alright, so this is second reading for a rezone of a parcel in a rural transitional district to commercial district per article eighteen, section eighteen oh nine and article twenty, section twenty oh three. Said property is legally described as lot four in the northeast quarter and the southeast quarter of section twenty-four, township ninety-four north, range fifty-six west of the fifth, fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. And the representative is here if you have any questions. This basically, uh, the next item is the plat that goes along with this and, and so the zoning is needed to bring the plat into compliance and the rezon's needed for the, the plat to, to, uh, for their usage.
This, this plat is just that little L, three acre, that L. This, this plat is just that little L, three acre, that L shape around, basically around the truck stop.
Correct, yes.
So they're, they're selling that and that's why they want it to be commercial? And who's the rep here? What, do you have any plans for that young man? Come on up, state your name. Yep.
Um, I'm Tyler Math, and I'm with Blackburn and Stevens. I'm covering for Mr. Stevens tonight, actually.
Mike's in peer probably.
Um, he, he had another engagement here in Yankton tonight, so, yes. But yes, um, from what I have heard from Mr. Better, that all sounds correct. Um, Mike did run through it with me, um, before coming here tonight, and Mr. Better is correct in describing that.
Thank you.
Any questions, any discussion?
Maybe, Mr. Chair, let's open it up for public comment.
Any public comment? Hearing none, open up a motion to approve the second rezone reading.
I move to approve the rezone.
Second.
Ryan approves Dan's second's. Discussion?
Yeah, yeah.
All in favor say aye.
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 Pose the same, motion carries. Okay, Gary, just keep on going down your list.
Now, as stated, we're going into the plats. First one is the Yankton land cattle plat, uh, lot, plat of Lot Four in northeast quarter, the southeast quarter of Section twenty-four, Township ninety-four North, Range fifty-six West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Gary, my only concern about this is it's going to be zoned commercial. But we have it as RT and it's only two point nine nine acres. Do we have to wait until it's officially commercial? So otherwise it wouldn't meet the minimum requirement?
They can run concurrently since this is contingent on the zoning going through, which she just did, so.
Okay. I guess I'm fine with that then.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion, uh, by John, second by Ryan. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Pose the same, motion carries. Bartley plat.
Plat of Lot N in the northeast quarter, the southeast quarter of Section seven, Township ninety-three North, Range fifty-six West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. They're just tying the two lots together.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion by Dan, a second by Ryan. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose the same, motion carries. McDonald plat.
Plat of Mac Edition in the southeast quarter, the northeast quarter of Section thirty-four, Township ninety-six North, Range fifty-five West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Motion by Dan, second by.
I'll second.
Ryan, discussion?
So this is.
All in favor say aye.
This is just plating out the building site.
It's just plating out the building site and it's.
All in favor say aye.
I just had one quick question. Is this one of those, um, um, pre-existing farm site deals?
Right.
Yeah.
Section five thirteen, yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, that's all.
Okay, next item on agenda is support for the National Center for.
Uh, we got the Bender plat, yeah.
Oh, Bender plat, yeah, sorry.
Plat of Track One and Track Two in the south, two hundred and forty-four feet of the replat of Lot One, Lakeview Bluffs in the northeast quarter of Section sixteen, Township ninety-three North, Range fifty-six West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Have a motion by Dan?
Is that, is that the one where there's no?
Yeah, he owns all the lots around it, so that's their access.
Let me get a second. Do I have a second? We don't wanna let the motion die.
Well, and, and this is a, I guess a ministerial task, is it not, it meets, if it meets the definition, it basically is automatic. We, we really can't vote against it.
You could request that they.
I'll second the motion.
They, uh, yeah, go.
I'll second the motion.
You could request that they submit a easement, access easement document with the plat.
I think that's a necessary thing.
That's what I was going to suggest also, is there has to be an easement to each lot.
We'll let them know.
To, to where? Which, which ones are you talking about?
To record with the plat, the access easement.
Yeah, we need like an easement or right away or something in there to ensure that that Track One still has an access point.
But aren't they, are there, okay. Which ones are they plating out? Track two or?
Just Track Two and Track One.
Plat of Track, so they're, they're plating out.
Two has access to it.
I think that would come when, if they would wanna go sell one of those off, I mean.
It's not guaranteed.
Yeah, well, to sell it though, they'd have to have.
Yeah, they'd have to have an access easement.
But you, you know, there's, there's, there's a ton of, of, you know, tracks that are out there that, you know, don't, don't have that until they're sold. I don't know. Are you, are you concerned with this, Gary? Or what, what do you advise us?
Well, it's, it's better when it shows it. I think that clears up the confusion right away. But, but you're right that, that the next buyer would have to request an access easement to the property.
As, as long as they're, you know, those two tracks are the same person, I don't have an issue with it. If, if they were, if he was just plating off Track One or Two, then I, I guess I would see the concern. But is there, are there any section line roads? I mean, that's a section line road on the west, isn't it? Says the quarter mile for Track Two there.
There's a section line on the top, the quarter line.
Quarter line, okay, got it.
Excuse me. That's not section.
Okay.
I'm concerned with not having an easement applied to the plat. Because somebody can buy that section, that plat one, and it, it's something that could fall through the cracks. Now, is the guy, the person that purchases that responsible to apply or get the easement? Yes, but at the same token, what if, you know, what if it's a twenty-two-year-old kid that wants to buy that plat and doesn't know any better?
Better get a lawyer.
And this has already went through the city process too, and they, they already approved it as is also.
I, I, I guess the real, the concern would come when it is, and it may never be sold because he owns some other property there. You know, I guess, my point is, is it, that's, that might never be a problem.
But is it an issue to put an easement on there?
Well, it, we'd have to go through the whole process again, would we not, through the city?
Well, no, they could, they could provide an access easement document that gets recorded with the plat.
Could, could we, could we approve it?
Really quickly, what's the, so if he's not, has no intention of selling, what's the purpose of this plat? Of dividing this tract into two?
Well, he's purchasing at Track One.
Yeah, he's, he's buying it and he already owns property in the area.
And he already owns the property to the south.
So it's, he's basically adding, you know, adding it on. So, I don't, what, what about approving it on the condition he? I mean, there might, there might never be a need for an easement access on that. I, I just hate to. I can't think of a.
Have we handled the, the same situation differently in other cases that you're?
We haven't had a showing, not showing in the past, not since I've been here anyway.
I guess we can't predict what people are gonna do with that property and if, if it meets the criteria of that.
Here's, here's a situation. I, I bought my lot on West Sealimit's Road and Twenty-Ninth Street was supposed to go on the south side of my property. Twenty-Ninth Street never happened, and now there's a house right next to me and no street. And I, I did get an easement at the time, but what if I would have bought that lot without an easement? The developer is now building houses there because the city told me that that was gonna be Twenty-Ninth Street on the south side of my house. And now it's not. There is no south, there is no Twenty-Ninth Street going west of West Sealimit's Road.
You, you guys feel strongly that you want an easement on this one? What about approving it contingent that he brings in an, an easement to that? Would that be acceptable for you guys?
I was, I thought you could do the, you could do that.
He could record a separate document with the plat.
Okay.
Yeah.
You fine with that?
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be much more comfortable if there's a, if there is at least an easement plan in this plat.
Okay. Or you, do you think, would that plan work, Gary, or, or not?
I would think so, then.
Okay, do you see any issue with that or not? Do you see any issue with that? Okay.
So now.
I, can I restate my motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Well, I withdraw my old motion and restate this one, uh, move approval with the condition that, which lot did you want? It was Lot number two?
Lot one.
Lot? Track one.
Track one.
Has.
Well, whichever way they wanna run it, they can run it through, through.
Well, actually, you know what?
We don't.
Why don't you guys make the motion and help?
I, I move that we approve the plat, uh, on the condition that there is a recorded easement for Track One.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, uh, approve the plat as long as there's an easement notification filed. Further discussion? All, all that I wanna say is, so when Joe Go farmer, farmer comes in with, uh, three hundred and sixty or six hundred and forty acres out and he wants to sell, uh, twenty acres out in the middle, uh, and there's no easement, are we, are we gonna require him to put an easement on it?
We have, yeah. Usually, like I said, they've always shown the access easement in those situations in the past since I've been here, so.
Yeah, in a lot of cases, it's requiring a road, you know, so we have to put in a right away or a road.
Cause they gotta know where they're putting their driveway in somehow.
If they buy the, anyway, go ahead. Have a motion and a second, discussion's over. All in favor say aye.
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 Pose the same, aye.
That was a good compromise there, to move the project forward, yeah. Good job, good, go team. No, I see your, I see your guys' point. That's a, that's a easy fix there.
Next item. Support for National Center for Public Land Counties. Go auditor.
Did you want me to take this, Mr. Chair, or?
I don't know anything about it.
I, I know a little bit about it.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, uh, yeah, this is, uh, something that, I know, I know we pay big bucks to, to Naco every year. This is something that the National Association of County Officials has worked with us for and, uh, for the cost of, I believe it's a one percent, which is, um, one time payment of one percent. We get the, uh, lactif dollars, so for a cost of, I believe a thousand dollars, we'll get fifty thousand back. Accurate, Gary? And so it, it's a good, good deal for us and, um, as a result of lobbying from Naco to the federal government. So, so our cost is a thousand and we should be getting, oh, I'm sorry, we'll get a hundred thousand dollars back. So that's, we have to opt into it and we do that by contributing a thousand dollars. So I think it's a, pretty much a no-brainer.
So that hundred thousand that we get back, that's, this goes right into our general fund?
I believe so.
So there's no strings attached to that?
Nope, uh, it's due to the lobbying effort and that's what I've been told. It's voluntary, we don't have to do it, but I, I guess, there are a couple counties that aren't participating, but I guess I didn't.
Dan, I'm missing, where does it mention a hundred thousand in this?
If you go to the last page, uh, it says, you know, and this is something where our, our South Dakota Association of County Commissioners has helped out too. So they helped out and that contribution, yeah, we'll go there and, and, uh, it was discussed a little bit at the association meeting, so.
This is the page you have to send.
Yeah, so we'll, uh, pave a mile, mile of road for us.
Get rejected, a hundred thousand dollars.
I, I'd make, go ahead.
I'll, I'll move to, uh, approve this.
Motion by John?
I'll second that.
Dan, the second. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose the same, motion carries. Next item on agenda, October third, twenty twenty-three minutes. I have a motion, uh, to approve those minutes.
I so move.
Motion, uh, motion approve, uh, by John, second by.
I'll second.
Ryan, discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, pose the same. Next item, claims.
We can probably do these together, can't we? Cause Wanda's not here. I guess we can do, they're separate on the agenda, so.
Well, I think, I think we've done them separately all the time, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. I move to approve the claims.
Have a motion to approve the claims, the second?
I'll second that.
Second by Dan. All in favor say aye.
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 Pose the same, motion carries. Uh, flu shots.
I just have one question. How many, how many county employees received the flu shot here last year? And can we not go to Hy-Vee or Walgreens or a place downtown and get that same shot? Basically for our, because our insurance pays it, it's just a convenience to have a, have it down here downstairs and at a cost of fifty dollars a shot.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight dollars a shot to the county, so.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion, uh, to approve the employee flu shots?
I guess I'd make that motion.
Dan, uh, moves. Have a second? I'll second it. Discussion?
Yeah, I think John brings up a real good point and especially all the changes happening, uh, um, the nurses off. Maybe that's something we, we bring up for next year or something.
It would be curious to know how many of our employees are taking advantage of this.
I, I think there was about fifteen that took it last.
I was gonna say, I know the number as well.
And, and the thing of it is, is now we're, we got a nurse that comes over from Tyndall to give the shots one day a week, so it's kind of a scheduled thing also, so. You can go grocery shopping at, uh, Hy-Vee and get your shot there or.
Do we wanna look into this for next year, something different? I think that'd be a good idea. It's maybe too late for this, this year, but you bring up a good point.
Have a motion and a second, uh, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose the same, motion carries. The treasurer's report and pool cash report.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion by Dan, a second by John to approve the employee, or, uh, the treasurer report and the pool cash report. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Pose the same, motion carries. Public comment? Does anybody want to have some public comment? Got two public, three public? Kinda slim out there tonight. Okay.
Should ask Pam for public comment.
Oh, I didn't count her. That's four. All right, public comment is, uh, closed. Commissioner updates. Ryan, we'll start with you this time.
Okay, well, um, I think we'll be setting up a, I'll be setting up a tour among the departments to talk about the phishing emails, um, do a quick presentation, reminder of security for, how all of us are involved in security for our county, so. Um, so that's gonna be one of my immediate things here in the next couple of weeks, so.
Thank you. Thank you for taking that lead.
Yep.
John?
Um, well, we had a meeting today with a clique, a couple of Clay County Commissioners about the, uh, flat grant proposal for the, the trail or whatever you wanna call it between Vermillion and Yankton, uh, which was a very good meeting. It, the, the conversation of a trail, bike trail or whatever you wanna talk about between Vermillion and Yankton kinda seems like it's way out there, but it does kinda make a lot of sense because it, there's a lot of connections between Vermillion and Yankton. But it does kinda make a lot of sense because it, there's a lot of connections between Vermillion and Yankton. The Missouri River is, is one of the largest connections that, that, that we share. And a way that we can cordially and com, combine with them to utilize that recreational area would be, would be great. And, and basically what, what this group is looking at doing right now is just doing a, kind of a planning stage for some grants to come through and, and assist in, in the planning and feasibility studies, so. Actually, I, I was kind of, I don't know, remorse or whatever when I, when we started this project, but I think now it's, it's grown to a fruition and it's kinda fun to be involved, so.
Yep.
Other than that, that's about all we've got going on the, uh, at this point in time.
I can, yeah, I pretty much can't top that, it was spot on, you know, the reason we're doing the flat grant, like John said, as we did the raise grant, Don did. And we were very, very close to getting that and so close, this is a similar grant. We're gonna try to use, uh, the information that we got for that and, uh, and do another similar grant for it. And we have the potential to get one point two million dollars, uh, to work on that and so, it's a great idea. That's all I got.
Anything else? Okay, the next, uh, item on the gen, agenda is the executive session for relief issues pursuant to S D L T. One dash twenty-five dash two and twenty-eight dash thirteen and twenty-eight dash thirteen dash one point three.
Make a motion, we go into executive session.
I have a motion by Dan.
Second.
Second, by John, discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Pose the same, motion carries.
I think we need to go there.
If, if.
We need to go there.
All we can talk about is that they're all.
We better go in there.
Unless, if you have something else, if you don't, we, we need to try to come back out, announce it and then go back in if you wanna do that. It's, if it's urgent, we.